We've done room today. Hi, good evening. So we have three agenda items, student achievement, thinking items that hopefully will get through all three today. First, I'm just gonna do a little bit for student achievement. We need actually what is curriculum? I think that's a really good starting point and be talking about that so you understand when agree on board reports to the board and we finalize some of our resources pieces that we are using the same language and you understand how that works. Then the principals will give an update on our dip plan between the meetings. Now, normally you have a couple more weeks usually between student achievement, but we've only had a couple weeks between here and then. And of course, I am unable to get work for the last amount of time, so not as far as we probably like to be on that. And then I did, just out of transparency, I fielded a lot of questions from our staff around what's appropriate or not appropriate in either current events or some controversial issues. So I've been working with some surrounding curriculum directors and making some modifications about like a little document, decision-making document and process our teachers can use and help decide, you know, if that's something that we should be talking to their students about or not. So that's kind of the three agenda items for today. So. And starting new this, this, again, just to remind the board committee members, I will always have a little background information on there. So I'm not gonna reread kind of what I wrote there for you, but I do have a little presentation that is available that I will be going through that is linked near the bottom. And of course, this is an information-only agenda item for today. So why is curriculum important? Well, it is probably one of the biggest student achievement indicators that we can control. And so that's why we're gonna spend some time with it. And actually, in horizontal's work, out of all the school factors that impact school and student achievement, the primary one in a school's success is helping students meet high standards. And they specifically pull up the words a guaranteed and viable curriculum, so we're gonna spend words with that, but it's a like the biggest way that we can really leverage as a school and a district some of our student achievement scores in the future. So guaranteed by definition means, and again, for people watching at home and wanting to read the slides, but a guaranteed curriculum is often defined as a mechanism through which all students have equal opportunity. So that means they have opportunity in time and access to learn rigorous content. And that's bolded rigorous content. It means it's supposed to be a higher, higher rigor. This requires a school-wide agreement and common understanding of the essential content that all students need to know, understand, and be able to do. A guaranteed curriculum gives all children opportunity to learn essential content and to provide this opportunity. Curriculum materials and instructional approaches must be grounded in research, implemented with fidelity, and must include vertical as well as horizontal lighting. So vertical meaning that everyone at that grade level or at that content is teaching the same. And then the horizontal that it's, you know, in our 4K through eighth grade system, it kind of goes along that same approach. And you'll notice it's also about our instructional approaches. So it means if one teacher is teaching math in a completely different instructional pedagogy than their neighbor, it is not a guaranteed curriculum. That it's about all of these things having to be there. And it means implemented with fidelity. And that sometimes can be hard for teachers. And I think that's because we wanna be responsive to our student needs in classrooms and what we have. But in the word of a guaranteed viable curriculum, it is that mini lesson is what we're delivering to all students. And then we find time in the pedagogy to meet individual student needs and be responsive to what we're seeing with students. And that's kind of what you see in our dip plan with our focus on small group instruction is really more the responsive nature of what we're seeing in curriculum. But all these pieces need to be in place for it to be guaranteed. So what does viable mean? And for a curriculum to be viable, there must be adequate time for teachers to teach the content for the students to learn the content. A viable curriculum eliminates the supplementary or nice-to-know content. And guaranteed and viable curriculum represents the core non-negotiables of student learning. It means all students at this grade in this subject are going to learn this. And we're gonna guarantee that. It's, we're gonna make sure we give our staff enough time to do that. And that's the other really important thing. I have a little short video from Mike Maddos. He's one of the head researchers out of Illinois related to professional learning communities and has done a lot of work. It kind of illustrates this idea of why a guaranteed viable curriculum is important, but more importantly, the decision-making process that happens in teachers' minds. Because they're making a lot of decisions every day individually that may or may not be helpful to supporting a guaranteed viable curriculum. And hopefully, again, to celebrate.
It's not just do you collaborate, okay? As we've talked about, it's what you collaborate about. And what are we gonna have these teacher teams do? They're gonna focus on the last three essentials. They're gonna focus on the last three parts. One, our third essential, the third part, the third thing we must be tied about. We gotta get very clear on exactly what all students must learn. TLC is capture it with this question. What do we expect our kids to learn? The first question we ask a team to consider. Marzano would call this a guaranteed viable curriculum. Reeves would call it power standard. I don't care whose vocabulary you wanna call it. We know this. If we want all kids to learn, we better get insanely clear on exactly what kids have to learn in this course, this grade level, this subject, to be prepared for next year and beyond. Now, some will say, though mine, you already have state standards, don't we? Why would we have teachers do this activity when it's already been defined for us? Okay, teachers, be honest here. Would you agree with this statement? There are more state standards than you could ever hope to have ever told them. Agreed? You try to squeeze all your state standards into one year in your course at your grade level, you're gonna look or sound a whole lot more like this. Can't be done, and folks, it's not you. Marzano did a study of our national standards. Here's what he found. To cover them all, we'd have to go from a K-12 program to a K-22 program. Unless one of the interventions in your district is kids get to go to school until they're 27, they're not gonna learn them all. So what's been the unintended outcome of asking teachers that's no child left behind pass to cover all your state standards? And once they get to their room, they know it's impossible. Well, teachers can't announce, "I'm skipping some." So in the privacy of their own room, when the standards police aren't watching, teachers are making choices. They think, they think this way. "I think this is really important. I'm gonna get this hard. In fact, I might even find time to reteach it if kids don't get it. This is pretty important. I'll make sure I teach it. All kids will have exposure to it, but I might not find time to reteach it if kids don't get it. And I'll try to get to everything, but if I run out of time, I might not get to this stuff." But the problem is every teacher's forced to do it in the privacy of their own room. So what's been the unintended outcome? Three national studies of the actual curriculum. Not what's on your state guide or your district guide was actually being taught. Here are the words to describe it. A self-selected jungle of standards. Wild variation, school to school, teacher to teacher, on what a child might learn, same course, same grade level, same subject. And the actual language arts curriculum is called curricular chaos. We must take this process out to the line of dead. One, we agreed one teacher can't meet the needs of every child. So we're gonna work collectively to meet the needs of every child. But how can we share kids and respond collectively if we're all teaching different things at different times? We can't. We must agree upon what's most essential. And we must engage every teacher to have a strong voice in this. One, who knows the needs of the kids at your school best in the whole world? The teachers who serve those kids. The best curriculum needs to connect both where kids have to get in the content. We also gotta help them from where they're coming from. The demographics of the schools in this room are different, right? They're coming from different places. So we need to consider both, not to, when kids come from a disadvantaged background, not to lower the bar, but you still gotta connect where they are to where they have to go. And the people who know where those kids are are the teachers who work with them. And these teachers also trained in their, in their subject. So they're the best people to connect the content we're have to get to where kids are coming from. Now, we know this. Let me give you a tool worth the price of admission, okay? I want you to look on page 290. Here's a key point, you ready? I did.
Okay, I'm gonna stop right there because we're not gonna watch all of them. But I hope you kind of got a little taste of how easy it is to kind of teachers independently can get off of their own from the guaranteed viable curriculum because they're making their own decisions, oftentimes in isolation because they have so much to cover. And I wanted everyone to really understand that because when I ask for more professional learning time in a calendar, some people think that means they're gonna be sitting in professional development. Well, to me, as a curriculum director, they're gonna be sitting down, having these conversations about what's most essential for them to have in their classroom and to start really getting deep into it. So we can help student achievement by having that kind of idea of a guaranteed and viable curriculum. And just the second thing I kind of wanted to really let you guys just think about is that it's a process. Curriculum takes time. And you kind of heard why. It means that every fifth grade teacher that's teaching social studies needs to talk about what's most important in that standard. We are never going to give any of the text book resources that we purchase. You're never getting through all of them. We're making decisions. Teachers make decisions every day about what they're taking out and what they're covering. But we wanna have agreement on what that is. Again, both in context and in their pedagogy, the how that they're teaching that. You know, and I just put there, you have to be aware of any action that removes teachers from the process. I'm a curriculum director. Yes, I can make that decision. But the power of the conversation happens when they do that collaboratively with each other, when they're making some of those decisions together about what is most important here for our students because they, they know them better. I did not come up with the title of this next slide and the next couple of slides just to warn you. But I did wanna kind of talk to you about some of the other research benefits and achievement benefits that come from a guaranteed viable curriculum. So I don't know how much you know about CATTY's meta-analysis and RE search study. But for schools, we want anything that's above a point four is where we wanna be. It shows a lot of promise at student achievement variables. So teacher clarity, just teachers coming in agreement about what clear learning looks like, what they want students to know, be able to do, and how they're gonna truly assess that and come in and agree it is a point seven five. That's huge. Vocabulary instruction, which should be part of curriculum, not just what's in your book. But you know, if you're teaching this next social studies lesson, what are the key vocabularies? Point six three. Integrate priorities, point nine three, huge. Members of Mike said, "Take kids where they come to you or they're at with the experience they've had in their lives in here and working and actually take them the next step." A comprehensive instructional program for teachers. That means having a really good core set of resources that help you as a starting place for curriculum at point seven two and then providing formative evaluation. That is what I'm doing, which is working with teachers on a review process, really evaluating, looking at what's working and not working, and making changes and revisions. It has a point nine zero. These are all like for me, like where I get a lot of nerdiness around. But it's because some really good instructional practices can have a huge lift to some of the work that I think frankly is the benefit of having someone working on curriculum here in the district now, I hope, for you guys. I, this is from learning my doing. I even put the page number. I did not call it seductive shortcuts. But I didn't list because these, these are very enticing shortcuts that a lot of school districts use, partly because of time and capacity of teachers, what the influence. But these are the things you don't want to do when it comes to curriculum, which is just to distribute standards and tell them to talk about it. Now, they need to understand them and unpack them. But again, that's not what the curriculum is. And it's easy to say like, "We'll just teach the standards." No, that's, that's what that means. Just assigning a committee of teachers to establish the curriculum. So that means one teacher actually works on that curriculum instead of the team dialogue, right? We just bought something new. So one teacher deciding what's the most important thing to do in isolation without chalking that over to a colleague because that colleague is making your own individual choices, right? With what they might cover or not cover. So you know, you just don't have one person doing that. Purchasing the curriculum. You will never get through a full text of anything. That's why it's not your curriculum. We want people to choose and to work on something that we know are the needs of our students here. Allowing the textbook to determine the curriculum. Often, I hear from a lot of teachers, sometimes parents, and that's okay because that tells me where we're at with your own understanding of curriculum, that our curriculum is envisioned math. Actually, that's the key resource that we use to deliver math. In true curriculum development, those teachers will be sitting around, talking a little bit more about what are some lessons that we might have to spend more time on? Because you know, kids have common misconceptions there. My example for that is his third grade telling time. Anybody who taught third grade will tell you elapsed time in particular is a hard concept for kids. Of course it is. They're working outside base ten mathematics for the first time in their whole life. As third graders, you're working with base twelve, base sixty, base, base twenty-four, however you wanna look at it, and elapsed time trying to go out of that, that's a huge concept. As a teacher, we know in teams, that's a misconception. So we might plan an extra two or three days of activities in a real curriculum to go along with that envisioned lesson or two. So that's what, that's kind of, you know, why you just don't take the textbook. You know, substituting our district benchmark assessments or textbooks for our common assessments as a team, they are good starting point, but we're seeing weaknesses in all of them. In a lot of cases, textbook companies don't necessarily have the best people developing your test questions. That's just true. So we wanna make sure we have high quality. And the last one, failing to include team dialogue around the assessments and evidence of student process. So again, I didn't come up with that, but you know, it's, it's easy to buy something and say that's a curriculum, but that's really where the real work starts to begin in schools from that point forward.
What, do you have an example of like, what would a team, what if they have like a third grade assessment or whatever? Like what does that mean? It was the second to last bullet point I did on the previous slide.
Sorry, go back.
I don't remember exactly what it says. A team developed a common assessment.
Right.
Which is like using the assessment from the textbook.
Well, sometimes they can use pieces of that, but like if I just kind of use a little bit of what's happening in science with our new materials. You know, some of, we are doing different labs sometimes or more depth labs that isn't necessarily part of what the core text is. So if you want to assess some of those skills, you're sometimes inserting your own test questions. You're doing something a little differently to better assess what you've actually taught. Because from my years of experience, Phil, and I teach teachers a lot how to do a test blueprint, where they basically take an end-of-the-unit test and they actually create a blueprint that the test manufacturers use. I have never come across a test blueprint where what the textbook company claims they're assessing is actually what our teachers thought they should be assessing in our music. So we want to take those test blueprints and actually make sure that our assessment is assessing what our curriculum is. Because sometimes you might spend longer time on elapsed time and I'm gonna want more test questions related to that to build their understanding than let's say envisions might have.
Okay. So then we need the, you know, I guess not that per time to allow for all that creation.
Yes.
Because I think we, at least as far as I've been able to tell, we do have, you know, teachers obviously be part of the curriculum conversation, the decision-making. I mean, obviously, previously you being here, I guess, I don't know what you're doing specifically, but I assume that I've had. And we have, especially in writing, I've done a lot of work, the people who can write it come wrong. I've done a lot of work in figuring out like what the standards are versus what we're doing and how we map all that together. And I know there's been some back and forth there. I guess the, I was also a little confused about the assigning of media teachers to establish a curriculum perception for colleagues. Is the implication that, we, we, because I felt at first, when I first read that, I felt like that's kind of what we have done in the past, where there was one or two teachers either volunteered or assigned that was part of the curriculum committee for math or writing or reading or whatever. But I thought that they were, you know, they would come to the meetings and be a part of that conversation in the curriculum meeting and then go back and get feedback. So we, I think we were not, you know, in that shortcut necessarily.
So don't mix up, Phil, what our curriculum committee might do as far as evaluating resources and our current things. Remember that I said, once we kind of select a resource is when the real curriculum work begins, which is when they collaborate with the other people teaching that to really start making some of those decisions.
Okay.
Yes.
Yeah.
And you have had really the pockets of this work happen here. I'll talk a little bit about like what are we seeing, I think, in some content areas that's true more than others and you know, what our next steps are going to be.
Well, I think we've certainly struggled with like the continued focus on a given curriculum. We have a year of curriculum selection where we do that work. And we do some of the mapping into the Merton layer, taking the, the resources and, you know, mapping it with our curriculum. But then the, there's a lot more after that initial kind of mapping of what we're actually gonna do and what we're not. Probably more to what that point was talking about that. I'm sure a lot of it happens behind the scenes, but I don't know that it's, that it's focused.
Well, it's the fidelity piece that I would say, Phil, was something that administrators and myself and other people will always stand because, you know, as you have new teachers come in, how are we adopting them into the curriculum? And what is required versus something that they might be able to make some decision-making around? Because that's part of that. And part of it's making sure that people stick with it to fidelity. You know, and when we say this is what you're, what we're doing and you agree upon it in a team, then we need to make sure people are following that as they determine. Because then what, what happens when they don't is that one teacher might have said, "I hate teaching elapsed time. I'm not gonna get to that lesson at the end of the year." And then we have a problem the other year. That's why, you know, it's, it's really too, it comes back to that slide that says guaranteed means that we're actually doing what we agreed to do and we're sticking with it to fidelity. And sometimes that's hard for teachers because I had to let some of my favorite units go as a teacher and that's hard. I'm just saying personally for myself in conversations that I have with my team, like, "No, I really, oh," you know, but it, I had to let it go. And it's easy to sneak back in. It's very.
In the past, we talked about this before, when the NIDR were, were around. So in the past, in curriculum conversations, we've obviously talked about like coming to this point. Like, I don't wanna be able to tell if a kid, if a fourth grader wasn't this third grade class or this one or this one or this one, right? The, the teachers can have, you know, pre-impotent independence in their heart, but it needs to end up at the same place.
Yes, and that's exactly what we're talking about.
And we wouldn't have those conversations, our specialists or, you know, I knew this happened because when I filled in for paternity leave, you'd say, "All right, we're looking forward. What's our main, you know, essential outcomes here?" Things like that as well. But it's that, that coming back to and making sure after the first year, you know, what modifications are you doing, particularly in the suspect.
Because it takes a lot of time. That's my point. Like this is, curriculum takes a ton of time to do a well. And that too is seductive shortcut, which is why a lot of districts do it because it's, it's hard to invest in the time that teachers need to do a well. And ultimately, I'm looking for like a half day a month probably for quite a long time. And as we're doing new curriculum, really starting there. So this is kind of like some of the next steps for us. I have put in the tag like time, resources, and teacher training. You know, I really need to work with teachers on some of what curriculum is and the good assessment and unit design practices that come with that. So understanding the role of the curriculum and renewal committee, which is to review current curriculum, make recommendations and reuse provincial resources that isn't determining the curriculum. It's making recommendations. And after the board looks at that and approves that and they look at a resource, then we go and start to work on the particular ins and outs of the curriculum. I'm really working at a district curriculum template, so everything will be in the exact same format. So when, because some feedback from new teachers is depending on how they're coming in, writing looks this way, reading looks that way, science looks this way, social studies. So a common template that we can all read and train and learn about is what we'll be doing when we are putting our curriculum together. Again, the real curriculum work happens after the review. That means we need to give time for the teachers to collaborate and agree to the items that go in our curriculum, which obviously happens with me around the table and the instructional specialists that we may have available, what, what can go into that. And you know, what's on the docket for professional learning next year is a focus on a curriculum and a suspect course, which I think we can still probably still get done for sure at the intermediate. And I'll work with primary at how we start to do that with the focus. I think four and five is really important in the next couple of years for me. But you know, for curriculum transparency, I want all the district documents as our teachers are creating them. I mean, we're not gonna give the edited book test to our families. That's not important. But for variety transparency, I think that's common template too will help parents to understand that if they want to look at something, you know, specifically what are we teaching, it's, it's available in the same format and easy for them to understand as well. And then eventually, I really wanna get grade level curriculum guides because right now, if you're a fifth grade parent, you have to look at like all the main core guides and electives to find out what's happening in fifth grade. It'd be nice to have a fifth grade guide of what we're teaching, just in fifth grade in one place for parents instead of it by a subject that we would have curriculum guides that again are easily accessible and understanding and give parents a good idea of what's happening at each of the grade level in, in increased transparency for our families because I know that's what I would like as a parent. And I know some, I had to ask a few teachers for that over at your home head. I don't know how they thought about that. But that's just kind of where we're, we're headed. So I know that was a little, you know, pretty quick overview. Is there any questions I can answer?
So four and five, what is the timeline for that? You said a couple of years for number three.
In, in essence, when we're putting a new curriculum in place, Lindsay will do all of this work. So social studies will happen, you know, when we agree, we'll work on those curriculums, we'll start to. So social studies will happen, you know, when we agree, we'll work on those curriculums, we'll start to put at least some of those, um. For the curriculum, you know, on the website, the guides will take some time as we revise some of those curriculums.
So this is my, yeah, really dumb question.
No dumb questions.
Let's just, I'll ask it because, um, I live it weekly. So there's inevitably a question to a math, uh, or an answer to a math problem. Uh, I'll just say it this way, given the way math is taught today versus the way I was taught, uh. First five years ago for me. Um, sometimes I don't even understand what they're asking for or how they want. So will these transparency curriculum guides, will that help parents to help their kids with their homework? Or is this more just like a hundred thousand foot view?
Well, I think the curriculum guide will definitely tell you more into like what's being taught and that thing at large. Um, I think we can get much better at, um, a lot of our companies have a really good family resource to help on some of that that I think we can get better at communicating towards them.
Yeah, I just, it was one last rephrase, it's like. I read it five times, I'm like, you know what? Just ask the shit really hard. And then please come home and tell me what the answer is.
No, no.
I just was one of those things.
Good. Anything else? Thank you. Um, if you have any questions, you know, you can just email me. Did you have a render?
No, there was a.
Okay. I just don't wanna pass that off. Hey, when, once my kids get into algebra, do you have a straight man still to learn that all positive? Or I'm son of the Dr. Rusk.
Well, I don't think that's the way we were taught.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
Yours is still a man's standard, that's a real, together with this one, that's like that whole big one, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
It is this idea of all these different strategies to get to that. Um, and I would say I love sometimes I got the manual because I have a reason.
Well, thanks for our time, I probably have plenty of resources online, right? So journal thing is online and all the videos are online, so there could still be problems where it's kind of completely without this crap.
Well, and sometimes it's okay to be like, it might not be a good question. And that's the other thing too. Um, okay, so next is the principal updates on the district improvement and innovation plan. So I'm gonna talk less, which is good, cause I'm running out of steam. So I don't know, I'll, I'll let, um. Jay, oh, package, do you have a preference who goes first?
I'll, I'll go first. That's all right. Um, so we have continued, um, I've, I've been doing weekly check-ins with our teachers. Just to find out how things are going, cause our focus, as, as mentioned last time, is on, on small group instruction, just having some great conversations with our teachers about. Where their kids are and what they're working on with them, how they're documenting all of that. So that's been, um, that's been really good to be able to have those. They haven't happened as frequently as I would like them to, just with everything that's been going on and having to have teachers cover classes and sometimes the kids that they're meeting with aren't here. So those are still happening on a regular basis, um, working with educator effectiveness still, um. Doing formal observations and all of the work that goes along with that. The one thing that we need to do better at is, uh, is to meet together as content areas, um, with, with, with our grade levels. Um, so we're working on trying to put together a plan that's a little more, um, a little more consistent in that respect. So that, uh, we can get together and talk about some of those things that Maria talked about when we're looking at assessments. Um, we're also trying to find a math interventionist and, uh, working through that. We've got some next steps planned for discussions tomorrow on, on where we are with that. Um, Maria and I had a great conversation with a company that's helping out, helping out with some reading tutors. Uh, for some of our students online, uh, will be a great opportunity for them, just to give them a little boost work can happen either before school, after school. Some parents want their child to be removed from an elective class to have the tutoring done that, but there's a lot of supports that are being put in place, a lot of conversations being had right now. So, um, teachers are working really, really hard, um, and, uh, they've got virtual kids, they've got the kids who are a person, they've got the kids who raise synchronous. And they're just, they're really pounding out every single day and coming back for more of that stuff. So very proud of them. Lucky to work with such grateful people.
We've been working on a new schedule too, a couple of, so feedback pieces, which is gonna be part of our summer. Cause we really would like, um, to have an ideal help that, okay, for next year. Do you have a 2022?
Yes.
Just to be clear.
I've got some things for my review of, uh, of what we've been doing. Um, I'm just more visual, so. So one thing, um, I'll pass it around, so you can see that's a really small group is one of the things, the data meetings that we hold. And some of the things that we come back to is how do we know what kids know, where are they at, and how do we grow them? Um, I'll share some of the documents that I have here. One of the things that I was just, their Heinz is here. This is how we started it off, like every data meeting we have is once a week, either Tuesday or Thursday, and dad comes back. So this is like what we did together, um, between our Christian coach, Andy, and me, myself, as he has students. And then we just said, really currently, uh, and we know that we're gonna give a year's growth in a year's time. So we had to benchmark it out, like where does this student have to be at the end of the year and then backwards track, like how do we know progress is being met? Because if we get into January and this child is not at that benchmark, then we have some more like teasing out what's the problem with practice. So that's really what we've been doing. So you can see, and then it's also appears our, our, our building goal is all around it, students that really are needing that. Fourteen years growth in years time, it gets that with four times a week. And then everyone else is three times a week in that conferring or small group. So that's every, every team meeting, we pull these out, we put them up just to remind us of where the data was. That's one thing that we've been doing. Um, the other thing that I have is that the data, what is the data that we use? Is it comes from our S and P formal records, also TC college, uh, running records, which stands for representative students asking questions. But then also from the goals that were, uh, and here's an example, I'll pick these back. So in here, you can see how teachers are planning and writing and documenting for kids with a visual. Just around, so here's Max's writing goal. So we look on the pre-assessment, we sit down and we decide. Organization is his largest, in this case, largest area of concern. And then we start finding those strategies, those embedded strategies. So students have access to this too, so they know when they go away, their goal setting with us. And then how do we improve organization, for example? This is one strategy, uh, an improvement strategy. Here's another one. And the reason why I kind of clumped them together, like these both are organizations, but neither one is the exact same. Because as one child moves along in one of the progressions, they might need something somewhere else. So this is also really nice. I see this child's put a lot of. Calls in their page, they must have been loving this. It's kind of textural. Anyway, um, so we keep this as well for some of our data. So then when we sit down with families, I would say to, um, back of science parents, this is what they've been working on, these are the strategies we use. And they really are teased out using some of the work of Dorn, of, um, uh, Teachers College, uh, Jen Saraballo, all different. So that's important. These, these groups change too. So that's important, some of the data tracking. And it's also the teachers' data. This, they come to the meetings and, um, share with their, with their colleagues, like I have students that's working on organization. This strategy worked really well, or this didn't work well, we have another strategy. Our teachers are getting, um, really smart at owning this, some of these, um, images to draw out. They are making them on kind of like more of a sticker peel, so they can lay it down after talking and speeding up their process with this. That was something that I wanted to talk about. Um, the other thing that I have is, so for our SPO, how do they document how much? Cause we want that for, at least, uh, three times a week with every student, four times. We're using something called Faster Scan and that allows teachers to take a picture of a student and upload it to me. So I can see all the strategies that they're teaching, but also where are the gains happening? And then if there's any, um, other collaboration that can be helped with that. So a lot of work on data, a lot of work on achievement, making sure that we're addressing student and planning forward, um, as well. Um, what else did I got? This is a full setting. And then like Maria talked about, just shifting gears. Something else that we've been working on is our schedule for next year's schedule largely impact what we do. I thought I could share this with people. Um, I thought I would share this, is like, this is, um, my building process schedule, of the process to a building schedule. How do we collectively get everyone's ideas and opinions to come together, um, as a team? A couple of years ago, when I first came, uh, I inherited a schedule and then we worked together. I still keep these types of things. This was. My first ego edit, and this is kind of the process you can read there, is that we sit down, we do a lot of work, just like Maria shared, some of the googers and education. A lot around what is best for our kids and then what are best for our staff too. We first look at our students and then we look at our staff. And then teachers are able and staff to add into all the things they think a schedule needs to do. And then they go, because we can't get everything into a schedule. This here is something to note that I noticed with my BLT that came back is. One of the things that are interesting is that they're very more around the idea of more of your pedagogy. Around what is scheduling for the students. I'll just share this with you. So this just happened last week. So, excuse me. Here they kind of cluster the, they need challenge and interaction, they need playing tools, they need predictability of teams. These are all kind of like co-stars around these kind of big questions. They need engagement. We talked about that. Quality of individualized instruction, growth, choice, connection. So you can see, these become really broad, which is a little different than the first time I did it. It was more specific around. Um, times more than kind of what we want for all kids. So this is kind of kind of shift I've noticed with the staff. The more that they've, um, grown professionally, they've been talking and reading resources. And then once you stay up, and often times we think they need the same two, they should really align. And that's one of the things that my BLT said, it's all the same things. We need the individual ability, we need challenges. Sometimes we need the help and assistance and all these things. So you can see professional development, they get kind of good that. Team planning, collaboration, time to meet students, connection, instructional time type, and then we also need some breaks. We need to be able to the bath room, get laundry prep, all of this stuff too. So you can see, that's kind of the process that we did. And so we'll leave this, this was just with the BLT, the BLT then takes this process and they lead the staff in it as well. So that's what we've been working on and then going to line with Jay, Maria, myself, or everybody to say, okay, when you have a schedule that uses shared staff. There are some things that are just not a go-to spot that we can't move, so we share that. This is what we've been working on to move us forward for our, uh, achievement student training. Any questions for me?
How can you share this with the parents? Like the first one with Heinzie, that would have been a really good thing for us to know. Cause Hudson's in second grade, it would be really nice to know like when he's moving on to the next level or do you share that at all with the, the parents of the?
Yeah, I would ask, um, the teachers have all the information, like, yeah, who knows them best? So like Mr. Heinzie talks about that at parent teacher conferences. These are the goals I know I said in during, some of these are first grade. Yeah, this is what is brought out at parent teacher conference. They brought these exact strategies and then said. In reading, for example, your child's in this kind of band, these are the strategies that we're gonna do to move them. So the teacher typically would share that out. They have that information as well, so.
Okay, so just at conferences? Cause that's nice that you guys are doing it in a week. You know, so I was like, wouldn't it be nice if we leave our progress of our kids?
Yeah, I think that that's something definitely like, you know, feedback too, is like, when can we do that? Cause waiting for conferences is too, too limited, right? That's what, it needs to be more frequent, that communication. Conferences really are just a part of a communication system. So I think that that would be a great thing is maybe after every unit. That's when teachers are sharing with me, like they're uploading all their documents and I'm, even though we're talking about them weekly, where I really sit down with each other teachers and say. Hey, let's look at this, where do we see our growth, our strengths, our challenges? That would be a great time to share it out. Maybe after every unit would be a really great time to do that. So people know. So I think, yeah, the parents want to know and want to better help, so that's a great thing.
I think it would also be helpful, like speaking for fourth grade, like kids all the way down to kindergarten will know their strategies. Because this is a strategy that they'll be working on consistently over and over again. So even just starting with Hudson and saying. Hey, like when you meet with Mr. or Ms. Kryeski during your like group times, what are your strategies right now? Like what's your sheet look like? And if he can't tell you, then I would just reach out to Jane and say, hey, can you tell me a little about what's going on? And then she can get more information, but he would be a good place to start too. And he'll, you'll be able to see when the gold shifts. And so say, well, now I'm working on this because I've done these strategies with Ms. Kryeski. And, you know, now I'm moving on to this strategy. So that might be a good way, like just a starting point, you know? You know, cause you're not gonna email Jane every day and say, you know, what's the update? Well, you can, you can, you can, but don't tell I said that. But, you know, that would just be, they, they remember more than we think they do. And because it's consistent, it will be very easy for him to say. Oh, like, well, today we worked on this strategy, but in the past I've done this, 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 because it's, it's always something that they just refer to, so.
Yeah, it'd be great for parents, you know, just like, she gave us the list and how, what we're doing next and the conferences, and so we work on that. But to know this, like even to know the asset strategy, so I didn't know that.
Yeah, for sure.
Well, and reading levels too, Lindsay, like the younger the kid, the quicker they go through them. So a lot of times kids are changing extremely fast and it's why an eighth grade reader might not even move a level. And that might be very appropriate, cause they're already in a very high level, reading beyond degree. So, you know, it's, it's different depending on the level of the reader with the information that we set back ahead.
Yeah, I mean, that's great, cause the math, we can see our paths, right?
Yeah.
Kids at home, like in reading, you don't have anything else.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's also in our current, you know, TC resources that we have, we do have progressions. And that's where we get a lot of our writing progressions from, you know, like where is this at, anywhere in the learning continuum. Reading is a little bit, is more complex, to break it down, there's a progression. It just doesn't always align exactly to. The main, um, topic or the.
Skills are strict.
Skills are, yeah, over time. Yeah, it's just hard. This is one of the.
I did write that down, I think that's a great thing, um, for, uh, the staff when I meet with them, it's like talking about like, when can we share this out? And when do we share and what could we use? I mean, I think these, as a mom, is very, they're very powerful to me. Like to say, I know this job pretty well, like, oh, this is what they're working on, the organization. Well, then next is that elaboration piece and they don't get it there always as a writer, you know? I think these are really great for that reason. And they're visual for kids. I can walk into a classroom, I'm in, um, Ms. McCourt's classroom, and the child came to me and said, wanna see my goal? Any goals in hands of kids, even a young thing can happen. And, you know, Hattie's work will tell you that's one of the best things that I think you have a high effect size on, so.
Kids knowing their goals are very good.
Yes, very. So, yes, someone like Jay doing a lot of, um, work around that and even to the instructional leadership. That's important and we got a good, we need just a great, great group of students, families, yeah.
I have other questions for Jay with that. I'm busy. Um, all right, our last agenda item is, um, our decision-making framework for, um, controversial issues or current events. And I'm kind of like, um, you know, I kind of put out like a philosophy in my memo, so I'm not gonna do it. But, you know, schools and my primary responsibility are, are not to tell kids what to think, but how to think. So that's what we wanna generate and make sure that when we're teaching, um, issues that can be somewhat political or, you know, um, of what's happening in current events. That it's not about, um, the events as much as it's about the thinking and the processing through. So, um, kind of, and I think that, again, kind of going to like the first. Thing that we talked about today in student achievement, about just trying to work on getting our curriculum a lot more transparent for all of our stakeholders. That's really what this is as well. Um, again, I just wanted to put something together as I'm working with staff. Because our social studies staff in particular, um, here in the intermediate school, our six, eight, eight, Globic. Hearing, I'm sure you wanna make sure that they're covering things with the sensitivity. Um, and the variance difference of opinions, and they're always asking me for, um, feedback. And things which is good, um, because it means, you know, my job is to make sure they have thought out all things. But that's kind of, um, a little bit of what the processes would be just for teachers to get by kind of doing your own self-reflection and self-readiness. And there's just a couple. Again, um, a couple of questions that we have our teachers, um. Kind of talk through or decide is a very good first step. Um, and again, um, I've kind of taken this through with the, with the staff member to hear. And kind of, um, I think what often kind of gets schools and our teachers in trouble is a lot just around communication to parents. Um, so, um, Outclass is coming up, it's very appropriate in eighth grade American history, that's an event that we cover. World War Two, so Katie Globick, um, worked, Jay and I, we put together a parent communication to let them know. Because that can be a very sensitive and emotional topic for kids, right? Um, when they're dealing with that. So, you know, we kind of did our checklist and then we put out our parent communication to let them know. not only what resources that we're using for that, which was very clear and upfront, but also to let parents know that that, that's happening in a discussion in class. And again, just trying to be really clear and transparent on things that, you know, again, you know, no matter what you think, for some people, the Holocaust could be a political issue. For others, not, it's not what we're trying to decide. We're trying to just be very clear in our communication to families, kind of about how we do that. And we even kind of put in here in this matrix, a timeline that we would like to know and how we would want our staff to communicate. So you would have saw that with Katie's, you know, what's the activity that's happening? What's the learning, the timeline, what objectives and student skills, what resources are we going to use? And then we work with the teachers around what instructional strategies make sense based off of the topics. Again, what's, you know, again, our job isn't to tell kids how, you know, what to think about it. What's the ability and experience to help around the how? And then just making sure that if there's any follow-up activities or communications that might need to go home, you know, you know, like Katie has something like, you know, I want to know if, you know, your student is feeling bothered or upset, so I can handle some of that if they come home after our activities related to the Holocaust. So I'm using that kind of as an example because that's kind of how we talked through this first matrix. Again, the idea is, you know, just to let the student achievement be knowing that as a curriculum director, I'm not just going to go off the scene of our parents. Our teachers are, we really want to be thoughtful to make sure that we're not hiding away from issues that we want to be able to tackle in school. But we're being really clear and transparent about what we select in communicating that appropriately before it happens. And making sure that we're following. Because that's what I want, as I'm on. Is that process happening right now? So this matrix is something I've been working on. And again, I'm working on with some other area curriculum directors. So I've been taking it through this whole process with Katie over the Holocaust. It's kind of the first one that's kind of come. So we're kind of just seeing how it goes. And I might be revising it based off of how that went. But the goal is kind of to have an internal process, Lindsay, that, that we follow. It seems to be, you know, working out okay. But again, you know, just stepping through that. Because a lot of parents, you know, obviously want to be more transparent, always having in the classroom. What we want to do. No, no teacher wants to be in the news. You know, our goal is to make sure we're not. So, you know, at the same time, you know, we've got really big values here. We still want them to understand we're in a global world and what does that mean? And to talk about some of these things, but they need to happen in a safe way, off a way, highly transparent and communicative. All right, look at that. Five, six, five.
We'll transition.
The warm part of the meeting. So this has been published in the Off No Enclosures Places, so that we have a board there. This is your chance to speak to us. So anybody who wants to address or, this is the one for the. Is this for this part or for the delegation to be heard?
That would be for delegation to be heard. The community forum is open to anyone who would like to. Delegations to be heard is just kind of us listing.
So go ahead.
Thank you for having me. As a position I operate by a quote of ethics, which specifically states that I will be ever vigilant and hating in the general welfare of this community. I would like to ask all of you as leaders of our district to answer a question for me. But first I want to remind you of the key responsibilities that you have as a board member of our district, which can be found in the Wisconsin Association of Board Guide for Candidates. The document details quality of a school board member, which includes a commitment to believe that all children of this school district are entitled to have available to them a beneficial educational program. A school board member should have an open mind and readiness to learn, attend seminars or workshops, which can help them make intelligent decisions in school affairs, a vision and ability to understand changes in our society, and the ability to advance the best interests of the school district. The section entitled Community Leadership and Advocacy. Community leadership is demonstrated when a school board and its members act as ambassadors and advocates for the district and its students. And that's the unpreachable of the guide that states that the board members are not immune from all possible personal liability when a court determines that a board member's conduct caused harms to another person. And like all laws, they are subject to interpretation. But my understanding after reading the guide is that the board must serve the community in the best interest of all individuals. And currently it feels like there's serious ethical violations since the decisions made by our board in regards to COVID have proven to cause substantial disruption, illness and potentially long-term harm to the large number of people in our community, including students and staff. And as a pipeline provider, I can tell you with confidence that as a result of community transmission from our school, there is a substantial number of community members that were very likely affected by the board failing to take action in mitigating COVID-19 in our school district. So my question for each of you tonight, as leaders of our community, what is your ethical rationale for not having any sort of mitigation plan to protect students back in our local community? And how do you define withholding a safe virtual option from families who are not ill so as to prevent further spread and homelessness in our community?
Probably personally, one of my biggest failures as long as I can remember has been not. Been good enough at this job, I guess, to help actually facilitate a dialogue and have a conversation about what should be done. All of the issues surrounding COVID over the last year and a half have been very political, I guess. It's been very heated. And we haven't had an open dialogue about much of it. But I think that in my, that's kind of a conservative question. In terms of the virtual option. And I think I even maybe said this in our meeting last week. If we've been having a conversation about a virtual option for the rest of the school year, that's a different conversation from up there. The virtual option for what amounted to, at the time, would have been four days of class, amounted to one day of class. It, it didn't make sense to me to put that extra burden on staff members. And that, I mean, I can be a debate too, because that was my opinion on it. Especially knowing that asynchronous learning was an option, which I did that with my kids. Fortunately, I was able to work remotely part of the time and ease vacation for other time. But that's part of our job. Even just trying to facilitate getting stuff back for. And so now everyone had that luxury of this, the bread, especially as like a position, you have to go before a job to meet your goal. But, you know. I guess not.
I would second for a lot of it. Before I made that decision, I actually went and talked to teachers. And teachers came here to, to me. And it, for those couple of days, it would just put two jobs on them. And we're already trying to do one job really in the back there. The option, and I know it wasn't virtual for a couple of months, but we had an option and we sent packets home.
Yeah, I'm concerned about, I think you made a right decision for five days of school. Because that's not my concern. My concern is, you know, when there's a positive case in a good class, like why can't this student have a choice to not go to class? Like why, why was there not a virtual option for all kids? And why was there no mitigation for the last four days of school?
So are you advocating for if one person has a case and in the, in the future, that the kid, the teachers have to teach both?
I think there should be an option to have, when you feel unsafe, why to school. You can keep your kids home and still have access to learn. That's not even. Yeah. So it has to be a safe option. And what's safe to you is different than what is safe to other people.
Yeah, that is, that was a bigger, that's a bigger conversation than what Monday's. Whatever that, what last week's, and I think that's, that's a valid discussion that should be had. I mean, historically, I guess, I think the majority of the board has ruled that they want to see data before making this. You have been, sixty percent of the kids, or parents of sixty percent of the kids, so it feels, there should be a score.
And I guess Amber, when we take, when we take a look at, again, I've been feeling a lot of questions that have been dialogued with people. Because we did have, we did, the first fourteen weeks of school, we averaged 1.6 COVID cases. At our primary school, 1.6 cases at our primary school. So I think as a school district, from an administrative leadership standpoint, we were, we were mitigating this, something came up, and we were able to not have what happened the past, you know, five days, five, six days. Because we, we had a major spike in basically four or five days of our school. And, and I understand, and I'm, I'm part of that, that decision-making process. I'm part of that recommendation process. And the first fourteen, fifteen weeks of school, we were able to mitigate. We were able to work, whatever our community was doing at the time was really, really working. We had a spike in sixth grade. We did, we were able to narrow that down and we were able to work through that. Again, that was a smaller scope of about ninety-five kids. But you know, when things started to pop up, we, we, we did what we felt was, was right in the avenues that we had. But, but I completely understand where the, the access to. That, that's what we heard a lot of is, is can I, can I access that middle virtual option too as well? And again, that, we, we heard both sides from our staff. So.
What did you do for the day?
What's that?
What did you do for the sixth grade class?
We spaced. We spaced and we communicated. We were very clear that this is how many cases were happening. Again, I'd have to go back and take a look at how many sixth grade families stayed home on, in the bodies of caution. There wasn't many. And this is just a really unique time. Because we've worked, we heard a lot of, the dialogue at the board level was, it's, we've got, we have the, we have the virus going around. We get other illnesses going on, as you see right now. But we have this other burden of health. So that's, those two are kind of intervening a little bit at the wrong time.
Well. You know, you're talking about ethics. You know, it's. What's happened in the past wasn't good for children either, was all the lockdowns. We've heard a lot of different opinions and a lot of opinions out there on how we should handle things. I think the one thing we're hearing right now was the greatest disservice to children was keeping them out of sending school. And face to face is what we do best. We made the decision early to be face to face this year. So parents wanted the choice to open enroll to an online school that does a very good job of that. They had the opportunity to do that. And it comes down, I, I strongly feel that we have to listen to everybody. You know, parents want to make choices. I'm not going to live here. That's not the way I'm going to live. I pray that our schools would be protected. They have a spike. Spike in every block, every state. We have a spike. Did what we needed to do. But to criticize that we're unethical, I think that's taking a step a little far. But you have your right to what you believe. And I have a right to believe what I have to believe. And I'm not living with you.
I would argue that the difference between living in fear and seeking reasonable caution. Right, like you, you don't say, you don't argue against wearing seatbelts, saying, I'm not going to live in fear. Right, like, so like, it seems a perhaps a smidge disingenuous. So that argument seems disingenuous.
The proposed plan, my run initially was no masks and current toys initially, unless there's sort of cases in a particular classroom and that classroom would be masked. So again, go back to the original decision in the beginning to, to decline that plan, right? There, there, you literally did nothing. And last week you proposed to do nothing, like you passed the measure to do nothing, like. I just don't understand how we're doing nothing.
Last year, last week, last year.
The whole school year thus far.
Last week's measure was to not do anything for four days. That was last week's.
I have a question last week. This procurement meeting in North Dakota.
Could you speak up a little bit? I hear you.
Yeah, I took my mask off, so. Ethical decision. Anyway, they, they made it clear that there's a lot of concern about OSHA and the impact within my company's operations. But it trickled down to me that I'm supposed to be discussing that as a risk management that if the OSHA guidelines come in, is that going to impact the schools at all? Or are schools exempt from OSHA?
We are not governed by OSHA. We are not. We're governed by a state board. So and again, they're very similar, but the question that I've been getting is if OSHA through the federal government does, you know, mask, not a mask, maybe, but a vaccine, for instance, that's going around in the, in the conversation. Do public schools and public entities need to fall underneath that? The answer is no. We are not governed by OSHA. But they're very close.
Should we put a board plan to further dispatch any mitigation measures that we may take or?
We're going to see what happens as we go along. The way we set up our, our plan.
I can expect my original question from the beginning of the school year before school started. How many kids have we not here for us to do something different? That's, that's my conclusion as well. And well, sixty percent of one of the schools, I guess that's really, you know, probably.
I think the only mitigation step we can put in place going forward would be masks. If we look at last year's mitigation, it was distancing masks, cleaning. We're, we're distancing in classrooms now that had been available to our staff since the beginning of school. So I think the only mitigation that we took away to start there, there's two mitigations we took away, I guess. One was stated that they take away, the board really took away one, which is masking. That needed approval, but distancing was available at any time from beginning of school till now. That was available. That was part of a classroom. We had that discussion at a board meeting in September, if you recall. And so that was, that was available at any time that. The next thing we, that wasn't. Next thing that wasn't available was masking and after people were approved, so. I think the kind of echo we said it's. We need we need to listen to everybody. To start the school year and last into last year overwhelmingly, we we heard from parents that they wanted to make a choice for themselves. That was the overwhelming majority of the mitigation we got was from parents that said we'd like to make a choice on masks. And so we made a decision as a board to listen to the majority. Phil is is right that we were looking at data as it came in. We have data that the last five days, it was been more than five days of of a spike. Recognize that. So I think what we're really talking about is just like one thing, mask.
There's a lot of things you can do.
Yeah, distancing is available and wasn't explicitly said that you can't. But I think some classrooms are doing a better job than others. I walked into a classroom on one Tuesday morning to pick up like this stuff. And there were some that were spaced apart and then there were some that were still in the streets. They were doing, I guess, the best they could probably given the size of the room and number of kids. It certainly isn't in place of requirements as we had it last year, right? It's have to, I guess, I don't know. So far aren't still in line and all that. Last year they were very rigorous about that.
The question I saw. They were spaced, they were originally, they would have four kids to a group and they're all spaced out now. But I did not walk through that.
Today I need a walkthrough and again, obviously every day depend on how these students. I mean, there were still seats together, but there were no students in there, you know, so it depends on how the classroom. Depends on how the classroom furniture was all configured, but but again, the last, again, I can tell you, two two days have been very. Or not, I should say Monday and Thursday were very rigorously spaced. Which was obviously easier to do with a lot easier to me, yeah, it was a lot easier.
Um, I guess, yeah, I I I made it in the district this year. We're coming from Texas where they very much had a everyone choose for themselves mentality. They had that in place last year, last year in my school district, it was much larger. Masks were optional even last year. And I can speak from personal experience, it did not work. We lost many staff members in our district, kids were out left and right. And that was the entire year. Teachers and I worked in that district as well as my children lived in that district. Teachers were afraid to come to school. But they were like they couldn't afford to not come to school either. So I guess to your point, saying that you don't want to live in fear, I don't think anyone is asking you to do that. That's certainly not the intent. And I would just like to say, I think all of us have a universal goal that we want our kids in person, face to face learning. That is everyone's goal. But when we choose to do nothing, like I don't understand what it's going to take. For us to take some action on making things better. So I can say from from my knowledge of my two children's classrooms, I've been in. I've obviously I've not been in the last week that there's been a huge spike, but I volunteered at all the parties. I've come and worked at the book fair, I've tried to get involved in the district. I've been in and out of my children's classrooms, they are not distanced and it's no fault to the teachers. I love the teachers, they have done an amazing job. But it's not a requirement. And so to say that they're distanced now and they're half full, of course, that's an easy thing to do, but by doing nothing. And I understand, I completely understand masks have become a very political thing, people feel very strongly on both sides of it. I'm just asking you as the leaders of this district to take some action and to find a way to mitigate measures. Because all of us want our children in school, that is everyone's goal. But when sixty percent of parents are out, that that should be a very clear message to you that that is, people don't feel safe coming to school. So as a as a new parent in the district who has been very happy, I mean, I I I love the school, the teachers are great. I love the staff, she's been wonderful. I I'm just, I'm asking you to make it. Better so that people feel comfortable sending their children to school.
Can I ask a quick question? When you guys say make it better, I just want to make it clear what you're asking for. And remember that we listen to everybody, so but it's I just want to make it very clear what you are asking for.
I mean, I I personally felt like. Dr. Russ's proposal at the beginning of the year, I I still felt like it was a a pretty soft proposal as far as like. We'll only wear masks if it gets bad, you know, if there get to be certain number of cases.
It was at least a plan.
But it was at least a plan, so it just feels like it's frustrating. For me to hear you say when we ask, when we directly ask, will there be mitigation measures? Is that even going to be a discussion on the table when we have so many children or children out of school? That your responses were just going to see what happens. That that's just frustrating as a parent who who very much wants her kids in school. But if if it continues like this and everyone's going to be traveling over the holidays as well. I I don't I don't know what January is going to look like, but even what we're seeing in surges and everyone seeing family traveling. I don't think this problem is going to go away January third when we return to campus. So now is the time to discuss options and come up with a plan.
You know, unfortunately, the truth may be that the best way to instigate change is to. One for the board and be on the side of the table to try and help direct change.
Yeah, absolutely. I'm not saying I I know this is not an easy job and I know that you're getting. I'm I'm not trying like I know that you're getting from from what everyone voices that's me. There's plenty of other voices saying advocating for the exact opposite. I I don't envy where you're sitting right now. But that's why I'm here to, you know, to just say hi. Please, please just discuss some options and try to come up with. A plan rather than just seeing what happens because that's clearly not working.
Any other comments?
Almost seven years ago to this date, what did you guys do to mitigate over seventy eighty kids? Would we do that? What would we do? What did you do? We would increase cleaning. At seventy kids, we would increase cleaning. Seven years ago, almost. Burn primary had COVID on the city kids. And no one asked for masks, no one asked for virtual. No one. Like two or three times a day.
Yeah, we're at a different time than then, you know, I've experienced the norwalk flu come through. Kids are getting sick right now, but this is a different time. We just have to. Note, give you example, I went to my grandchildren's. Christmas program at another local school here in the area. They're not having a. Intermediate school with a spike. I just we just have to take the data we get and use it.
I would also argue that the the argument that something bad happened in the past and you didn't do anything, so you shouldn't do anything about bad things happening now, that's a bit absurd.
I'm not saying that, I'm just asking what you did.
Okay, sorry.
You're you're taking that out of context.
I guess what we're trying to say is, you know, we experienced it because we had a child who was immunocompromised then because he was going chemotherapy. And there was a large outbreak of influenza A. And the way it worked was the school notified families when there was an outbreak or something like that. Or other times when there would be like a. Mass stomach flu or whatever, but I mean influenza A can be, I mean influenza can be serious. Let's, I mean, especially with young kids. I mean, let's not try and downplay influenza all of a sudden because now COVID's here. They're both they're both serious. I worry more about influenza with my children than COVID, but that's me, my opinion. But when that happened, the school did a job of notifying the parents so parents could make the choice. We were notified because of our situation and we got to make the choice of what to do. But nobody was like. Panicking and demanding that, you know, school be shut down. You know, if one or two kids are sick, then we go to virtual, extra clean efforts were put in, you know. Kind of rode through the spike and everything was kind of better after a short time and, you know, I mean, this is just COVID's not going anywhere. We're going to see spikes ups and downs, I think we all know that. I think we've done great this fall with our numbers and this is our first spike that we've had. And I think it being right before Christmas has caused a lot of concern. And everyone wants to get together for Christmas. I I guess I I, you know, I listen to the teachers about how hard it is to do online and in the classroom. There's a lot of students that cannot do online, they have to be in the classroom. There are students that cannot wear a mask. So again, I mean, there has to be choice. I I try and see both sides, I I I I see your concern, but I ask like. You said when one child in the classroom, I mean, where how do we come up with the number of like how many kids in the classroom? And all of a sudden, we're going to slap masks back on the kids or or all of a sudden, we're going to say to the teachers, you know. There's two kids in the classroom, three kids in the classroom now, you know, you got to do virtual too. Are we going to be doing this every year now, you know?
I mean, I think when half the school doesn't come and teachers, there are not enough teachers to run the school, then I think that more is asking up with a plan.
Right, so when when there's not enough staff, obviously, school cannot run.
The teachers aren't all just COVID, they're not, they don't have enough staff to COVID. Am I correct, seven? All COVID, so missing seven teachers, still have enough coverage.
So there was other seven, seven teachers who have, seven staff, staff members. Staff members have COVID. There's direct contacts, there's there's personal appointments that they had, they had personal.
Exactly, there's more than sick kids, things like that.
It is, it's nice to look at.
What do you have COVID or staff?
And understandably, I mean, if there's not enough staff, of course, I mean, what are we going to do, send our kids in the I might run around school? Then something obviously there has to be a plan in place, but if there's enough staff in the building and a classroom has a couple of kids now with COVID. I mean, are we going to make everybody then? Like maybe the teachers say, okay, now we're online or back to masks or this or that. I don't know if I'm.
That's that's what Ron's plan detailed is that a certain threshold that he decided.
But how do you know what that threshold is? You reached it.
I'd like to let you.
Oh, we were having a story, Chad, you've been.
Thank you. I I would agree that lack of a plan and just from from a pure optics perspective. Is really hard as a parent, I can imagine it would be really hard as a staff member to see these see these spikes. And I mean, I am, I I agree that you have to look at the data that's available to you. And I I believe that if a planner in place, there's nothing that would safely revisit it at any point in time in the future. But to go into these spikes with nothing and to see the board do nothing as a result of it. I think that there is a a loss of confidence. And and to your point, you know, like what what is the number? And that that would be the challenging part, but I think once brain work is in place. And the individuals know when you're approaching a threshold or if we're getting close to a thing, there is more time to prepare. Than to have to flip a switch to say, oh, now we got a switch because now we've reached a a number that nobody knew what it was. I would agree and I did email the board that I, you know, I fully support a plan. I think it's really important to have that, not just COVID related. To your point, this could apply to influenza, if you're seeing sixty percent of children out. Or or who knows what other, you know, communicable disease is going to come in the future. I think it's really, really important to have a framework in place to help support our kids and our staff.
That's why I, you know, I agree. That's why we tried doing it a couple of months ago.
Just to clarify myself. On the COVID issue versus the flu. COVID is a death issue, it's in the news every day. It's always in the forefront. When a local school has a flu, it may. Get the news, but it's not it's not nationwide.
I'm just, I was just trying to get the name of the stack that I had.
Right.
One of the, I mean, there's different illnesses, right? For instance, all of these different, you know, hospitalization rates and everything, right? It's a bit different.
Schools need a lot of praise. Any other comments?
I have one thing to add. This is a little bit different, so I thought I was taking a turn. Something I just like to like state very publicly. I know many people agree or disagree with the decision that the administrative teams have been taking over the past couple of days. But one thing I like to commend is how hard our administrators have been working between Ron, Becca, Jay and Lori, April and Jim. They've put in a lot of work, I mean, we as teachers, you know, we were part, like, I'm not trying to say that we're not working towards them, but our administrative team has put in. Time in their weekends, time outside of school. And as a staff member, I notice and appreciate how hard our administrators are trying to help us. And I don't necessarily think they always get the same support that we get, so I just want to publicly state. That I at least appreciate everything that our principals, our superintendent and our administration has done over the past couple of weeks specifically. Because I know that it hasn't been easy, so thank you to our administrative team for what you've done over the past couple of days. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have to agree with that too, I just thank you. I I'd like to publicly thank you for allowing this kind of open. Forums back and forth, I think our school boards need something like this. Thank you for everything you've done to us.
I do want to add, as we're doing research on mitigation strategies. And if we have future topics around if we're going to adopt a plan. Really, it just makes my son turn a little bit to talk about this is a deck COVID data point, and I know that's a serious thing to talk about. But there's eight to hundred other things with the whole child that it really affects. When you put a child in with a mask on a child in the classroom. Our curriculum isn't, I believe we have teachers college, right? It's not a sit and get packet curriculum, right? So to to some packets home, it's okay for today, right? But to space kids when small group instruction is huge, do we need to be okay with the inches of each other, right? We know best strategies and that we space again and put a mask on. The the gap is just going to grow and we've seen more speech referrals. I work in a larger district just outside of here. And. That is more detrimental to me than a child, a healthy child, obviously, there's new compromised children. Bouncing back, so my teacher and mama heart are crying right now because it's a struggle and it's a battle for help. Also just for the well, you know, the child, so that really scares me knowing that our literacy curriculum does not support spacing. So that like, I don't know how I'm going to do that. And virtual learning is hard. Right, it's hard. So I think that as we talk about the data and we're going to maybe get a little bit more internet with that next one. I think we need to look at the whole chat and really advocate for them. Their social and emotional. From my standpoint comes first, right? And then we can learn, otherwise, I I I don't know, there's a happy medium, but maybe we can get there. To support the child instead of talk, it's a data point for COVID, what else, right? And I know that we all support that when I'm saying, and then it's just the how, right? There's not a lot of students doing it perfectly yet, my district is not doing it perfectly yet. But I think we can get there and I think we can get there well with knowing what we have and we have great admin leadership. I'm just going to throw that there and keep it in your mind.
Thank you. S R. Have we gotten a number for S R three yet? What's our total S R three and then what's our total S R?
Very preliminary yet, but we're we're still waiting for our, there's the in-person learning dollars that have not been.
Okay, you're still. Okay, you're still saying that, that's like five percent, that's like five percent.
Correct, yeah, the plan is still being kind of questioned at the state and the federal level. Um, we have our core S R three dollars of.
Two fifty?
Two seventy.
Two seventy, uh, we, but we're expecting more in-person dollars.
Okay.
Uh, to come through yet, but again.
So, like, what's your estimate total for one, two, or three right now?
Our absolute best case, if we can get every, like, people up to seven hundred and eighty-one dollars, which is like one of the original points. Would be giving us an additional four hundred thousand dollars.
Okay.
Do I think that's gonna happen at this point? No, no, so if we can get another like one fifty, I will be excited.
And then we have to what?
Twenty twenty-four.
Twenty twenty-four now, you don't think they're gonna extend it?
What was that?
You don't think they're gonna extend it?
I, you know, at this point, I'm not sure because the forty-nine states really, you know, have had their money and aren't able to kind of stick to their, when it starts stemming, so. I don't know if the federal government will extend the deadline just because the staffs are kind of the one that's critical. But we'll see.
Okay, for the record, we've submitted everything.
Correct.
Needed to see.
Yeah, I know that, I'm just curious, yeah, I, I understand, it's why I just wanted to see your notes.
We knew our S R, we know.
It's just in the answer.
Yeah, I know.
We're just waiting. No one knows except if you weren't in person, then you know your dollar.
Yeah.
Everybody else, I mean, even rural Wisconsin, which is really the. The, the heart of the conversation piece now of that five percent. Which is too bad because those folks were in person all the time.
So we really don't have a dollar figure what we're gonna put towards.
We, we have a dollar figure about what our minimum is and then what April said is, is it could be above and beyond four. S R two and S R three is two seventy, could be up to, you know, six, six hundred, seven hundred thousand dollars.
So then, like I said, I really enjoyed. This three half a year, it's, it's awesome because. She answered a ton of questions I was gonna ask, because I wasn't bringing up any of this COVID stuff at all. Um, but as far as our goals, I know President, you said at the end of the last meeting, you know, as a board, you guys are not happy with our test. To, to super dinner on. And now I see that we actually are starting to build. A plan of attack. Back in the morning, and I see you've been working, so. Are we, are we, do we have any goals set as far as like percentage increases?
Yep, that's all in our plan, yep.
Are we gonna have accountability, I mean, where, where's the accountability gonna lay if we don't meet these percentages? I mean, is it gonna be on you? We're gonna look at you and, I mean, or is it gonna be on you or that's, I mean. You know, what, what kind of accountability is a board, what are you gonna look at for accountability as far as? You know, testing grades is going up because when I pull the, uh, ORs, it's dropped, you know. Whiteout twenty twenty. But the last, you know, five years, but every year. We're dropping and our feeder schools are. Getting ahead of us, so. I just, I mean, I wanna know what kind of goals you're setting for at least this year.
Action steps.
I know you're, you're talking.
We're running this great dashboard with the board over what they add, so that should be coming in the next couple of weeks and any months, and I know you come to the meeting, so. We'll begin talking about them at student achievement. Um, committee meeting about what, what we wanna kind of work for goals and. And action steps will be reported, putting together. A little bit more robust of a school and search improvement process. Um, around, around some that, because we absolutely have a desire to, to do better. Um, you know, as far as accountability, as far as S R funds, I don't know if you're talking about.
No, 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 accountability, I'm just talking, I'm just talking about accountability. Accountability as well, we're trying to meet our goals, trying to raise our test scores.
Yeah.
Um, you know, we're, I mean, we'll put it on our teachers.
Yeah.
I mean, I think us parents, I think we need to come to as parents. I don't think a lot of us as parents. Are accountable, you know, we like to pass the buck on, teachers fall, administrations fall. Um, you know, a perfect example is, at the meeting, you didn't have a clue. About, um, when Becca, you handed out Becca?
Strategy.
This strategy.
Yeah, I mean, so I think as parents, I think. Or call ask.
Ultimately, to answer your question, I guess the board is the ones that are accountable.
And, and, and we're taking, and again, I just refer back to our, our plan. Which is part of the student achievement committee meetings, it's posted and things like that, but from an accountability standpoint. Um, I report to the board and they, they've seen the plan and, and we continue to dialogue because we do wanna be tight from the boardroom to the classroom, so. I'm in dialogue with them, I've got individual conversations with each of my administrative team. For instance, I meet with Jay and Becca every week to go through about what it is that they're doing weekly with their staff. They're meeting. Individually or in small groups of teams and then all the way down to the micro level to really, really make this happen, so. Um, it, it is a focus for us to increase those achievement indicators that are very, very public as well as other parts too as well. And I heard, while at the same time, really inspire that curiosity and give kids a very, very well-rounded. Opportunities so that they can flourish beyond you.
And I heard a lot of talk about transparency and. And. That's, that's a good thing.
Yep, I mean, we just aired live our student achievement committee meeting, so there is a, there is a, a. We know that it's important, we know that people are starting to have dialogue, we know it's been a focus of the board. Um, and particularly through, through the evaluation lens too as well as how are we going to increase? Those, those achievement indicators. And we're really working at that.
One last question, you guys do surveys? For your teachers, every year, do you have a survey for your, your teachers as far as concerns they have, issues they have, feelings they have? Um. Have you guys thought about it as administration? I think teachers wanna be very clear, from what I've been hearing, seeing, listening. I think it'd be a great thing to have a, like, an in-house survey. Or teachers in staff. With follow-up questions, it's not yes or no's. But, you know, five questions.
And I guess our buildings have tried to, through their building leadership teams and through other avenues to bring. You know, issues and questions that they may have, but. I see some people feel comfortable with that, well, others do not.
Any other question?
Couple of years ago, right, where Katie was, um, part of that, when, when did we do that?
The last one we did, I believe it was twenty seventeen. Um, and then we did another one, and we have done some more focus groups right around twenty eighteen. So it's been a while since we really. Leveraged into what we probably call workforce engagement was through surveys and things like that. The last time we, we did a formal, like, general sentinel, sentinel workplace, we were top workplace in, uh, in the area. But again, we still wanna continue to engage our employees. In whether it be, you know, work environment, academics, I mean, we just got done hearing about really trying to. And we've always done to try to really engage them in the academic progress, but through the frequent instruction reviews. But, uh, I'm just really need to really reinforce that as well.
Was it? Two thousand staff survey, I don't know if it was all staff or if it was like subset though.
No, I think we've done a lot of full staff, but more so from a social emotional lens. And we've got that data, um, we're still launching into some of our social emotional work.
That was like two thousand what?
Two thousand nineteen.
Nineteen and then we focused on. We have a full staff.
Okay, we're going to move into our board meeting at this point. I mean, and we're gonna start the president's allegiance.
President's allegiance. In the light of the United States of America. And to the Republic, over which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, no test, for all.
Okay, this meeting is posed in the proper place. And with agenda ahead, so we've, uh, do our. Uh, if, if we could make a, a motion to amend the agenda to place our audit report. Uh, immediately or before the approval of the minutes, that would be fantastic for, um, Mr. Meckler. So he can continue on with his evening, okay?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda with the modification of the audit report come, uh, before the two minutes.
Second of that. The motion of section discussion. All favor then say aye.
Aye.
Post same sign, motion to carry. All right, I'm Ryan, I think I'm a partner at Riley Current Ben. Uh, we performed the June thirtieth of twenty twenty-one audit. Uh, we issued our audit report, it's unmodified opinion, which is the clean opinion, which is what you were looking for. Uh, there were no new adoption of any GASP's this year finally. Uh, nice to have a break for one year. Um, and then with our financial results, so you had a decrease in your fund balance by fifty-three thousand nine hundred and two dollars. Um. Not concerning for that because last year you had a surplus due to COVID, not spending funds and you actually assigned fund balance last year three hundred and eighty thousand. Carry it over to this year, so we were kind of expecting to have a, a decrease in your fund balance, so. Um, nothing to be concerned there, and then your general fund, your fund balance at the end of the year. Um, you have your non-spendable, which is at thirty-eight thousand three eighty-two. Um, you have restricted five hundred and seventy-five dollars, that's for common library fund that you received that you did not spend the full amount. And then unassigned fund balance of three billion five hundred and eighty-two thousand. Um, so we have general fund, um, expenditures of ten million two hundred and four thousand this year. Um, so your fund balance, you have, um, thirty-five point four eight percent of your operating budget. Um, as a reserve for future periods, so, um, that's a, a good place to be at, um, it helps, um, that you don't have to do short-term borrow for, for the year, so. Um, then we have our general fund, our budgetary information. Um, our expenditures, um, you had, this is one ten and twenty-seven combined. Your budget expenditures were ten million two hundred and sixty-five thousand. Um, your actual expenditures were ten million two hundred and four thousand, so you spent ninety-nine point four one percent of your budget, so. Um, and then your revenues, um, you had budgeted, um, ten million sixty thousand. Um, actual was ten million one hundred and fifty thousand, so you received one hundred point nine percent of your budget. Um, then we have our payments on your debt. Um, this year there was principal payments of fifty thousand and interest of twelve thousand. And then your balance of your general obligation debt at the end of the year was three hundred and eighty-one thousand eight hundred and eighteen thousand. Um, then we have our lovely, um, footnote disclosures that we do for your pension, um, or for your W R S. Um, which is on footnote six, page nineteen. Um, kind of talks about what the, the, um, pension is, which is your W R S liability. Um, on your statements, you have net pension asset of one million nine hundred and two thousand. Um, you have deferred outflows, um, related to the pension of two million six hundred, or two million nine hundred and sixty-six thousand, which is. Sort of like an asset, and then we have deferred inflows related to the pension of four million one hundred and seventy-seven, which is a liability. Um, so the debt is, um, positive six hundred and eighty-one thousand. Um, then we have our supplemental pension, um, that's footnote seven of the report. And we have deferred outflows related to the, uh, supplemental pension of thirty-three thousand five sixty-six. Now we have total supplemental pension liability of one hundred and two thousand. Um, so we have a net of sixty, um, eight thousand nine seventy-nine, which was down from ninety-six thousand seven twenty-two year before, so we should see that number going down. Um, every year, so. Then we have our post-employment benefits, um, that's footnote eight, um, who starts on page twenty-six. Um, and here we have our deferred outflows related to the pension of sixty-nine thousand one sixty-four. Um, deferred inflows of eighteen thousand eight forty-one, and then we have our net whole head liability of one hundred and twelve thousand, so. Um, that total liability is at seventy-eight thousand nine forty-seven, um, which was up from sixty-seven thousand the year before. And that's just due to the actuarial, they use discount rates, um, that changed from three point five to two point two five for the current year, so that's the reason for that change. Um, you're, uh, we also, um, do a state single audit, um, there were no state single audit findings that we had during the audit. Um, you do not meet the threshold for the federal uniform guidance audit, which is the federal single audit. That threshold is at seven hundred and fifty thousand, you guys are at five, sixty above the federal funds. So if you receive a lot of those S R funds, um, next year you could hit the threshold to have a federal single audit, um, so that's a. Lot more details, so people have more work related to that, so. Um. So, and then we also issued a management letter, um, we report, um, significant, significant deficiencies. And we have the same one we have every year, the preparation of the financial statements. Uh, the only thing that we're really responsible for in the audit report is the opinion letters. That everything else in here is responsible for districts and that includes all background disclosures and everything. And there's probably one or two districts in the whole state that could actually buy and do those disclosures, so it's. Common for school districts have significant deficiency to our standards, so. Um, and then we also have, uh, just some other comments. Um, we talked about, um, segregation of duties, um, that you're small districts, so you guys are aware of that and you guys put controls in place to help. Segregation, who's having pretty much a small economic department. Um, then we talked about the actuarial report for your post-employment benefits. Um, every three years you're required to have a full study done. Um, so that is to be completed for the year beginning July first of twenty twenty-one, so the current period. So that'll need to be updated for the twenty twenty-two audit. Um, and then, uh, new standard for next year is, um, that will be in place is GASP eighty-seven, which is services, so. Um. Clean audit, um, are there any questions? I know it's a lot of information.
Just from a standpoint of our, uh. Pension-related issues and, and payments.
Mm-hmm.
Future with inflation raging and discounted rates and cost of living adjustments. Is the expectation on a go-forward basis that that? Uh, the actuarial tables will be adjusted and it won't be in our pay?
Well, that is a possibility, um, and each of the ones where there is the actuarial. They show like a table where they're just by one percent, how like one percent down or one percent up and how much it can change. And the biggest one is for the W R S. Um, there's, there's years that it's an asset, but some years it's a liability based on inflation rates and health insurance, uh, for like the, the, um, the. The employment benefit, like if there's health insurance part of it, that can be have a real effect on that as well, so. The actuarials take, they take a look and it's pretty much, they use the same for all school districts because it's state of standard that they have filed. So, yeah, if you look at the footnotes, it will tell you how much those can change by just changing it one percent, which can be pretty good, so. But the, the regular reporting, you only see that in your, your end audit report, uh, because your funds stay there, what you do on a monthly basis, you don't take a look at that, so that's that one point. In time for the year, so.
And actually, W R S rates went down this upcoming year. Yeah, they dropped by order, or have risen. Yeah, have risen to a quarter.
Thank you.
All right. Also, there's no other questions, thank you.
I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, we're now on to approval of the minutes, we've got three minutes.
We made a motion to approve this November twenty ninth, two thousand twenty-one, six fifteen PM open session, December fifteenth, two thousand twenty-one, five PM open session, and Wednesday, December fifteenth, two thousand twenty-one, at twelve PM open session.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Discussions, corrections. I did not chair the meeting on. Wednesday, December fifteenth. Then we do make that change. Then the motion to. Pro the minutes with changes. I.
Do they need to do the whole second?
We need to.
I have a second, okay, second.
We have a motion, a second to. Pro the minutes with the changes. All favor then say aye.
Aye, aye.
Post same sign, motion to carry. We are on to approval of the financial report, do listen.
Okay, uh, your motion to approve, uh, voucher listing, uh, from November twentieth, twenty twenty-one through December tenth, twenty twenty-one. Uh, payroll direct deposit number nine, zero, 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 five, five, seven, one, eight through nine, zero, 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 five, five, eight, two, two. The amount of one hundred and thirty-nine thousand six hundred and seventy-one thousand four hundred and two cents. Uh, wire transfer number two, zero, two, one, zero, zero, one, five, one, or two, zero, two, one, zero, zero, one, seven, one. The amount of two hundred and twenty thousand eight hundred and forty-two dollars twenty-one cents for a total payroll of three hundred and sixty thousand five hundred and thirteen dollars and sixty-three cents. Count payable check number five, five, zero, two, two through five, five, zero, four, eight. And the amount of one hundred and thirty-five thousand. Forty-six dollars and fifty-eight cents. Uh, with a footnote there that checked five, zero, five, five, zero, one, five, and five, five. Zero, one, eight are points. E D games. Any wire transfer two, zero, two, one. Any wire transfer two, zero, two, one, zero, zero, one, five, nine. Two, two, zero, two, one, zero, zero, one, six, two, in the amount of six thousand nine hundred and seventy eight dollars and forty two cents. Uh, credit card transaction number one, one, two, zero, two, one, non forty two thousand five hundred and eighty two dollars and fifty four cents. E C H direct deposit number two, one, two, two, zero, zero, five, three, through two, one, two, two, zero, 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 five, nine. And the amount of one thousand nine hundred and eighty nine dollars and sixty six cents for total accounts payable of one hundred and eighty six thousand five hundred and ninety seven dollars and twenty cents. For total disbursements of five hundred and forty seven thousand one hundred and ten dollars and eighty three cents.
Okay, we have a motion second. Any questions? In all favor of the financial report, say aye.
Aye.
Hold same side, motion's carrying. We are on to delegations to be heard. Is Amber? Sheila. No one has asked to speak. She wants, I will open it up, somebody does want to address the board. Here, this is not a time where there's dialogue back and forth. This would be just to. To the board.
Dean, I do have a letter uh written from Stephanie Wagner again, beginning to. Significant COVID within the family is unable to come to the meeting and. Uh, she asked me to read another letter. That's okay, okay, because of the COVID situation. Um, here's school board members. My name is Stephanie Wagner. I have a parent of three children who attend intermediate and primary schools. I again unfortunately cannot join you today, but four of my primary members testing positive for COVID nineteen. Thank you for your time in reading my letter. I am following up on my last letter I sent. My question to the board was, what are you doing to create and or maintain a good education for our children and keep them safe? It is time to set up, set our differences aside. We must take off our political hats and open our minds and hearts to empathy and truly listen to one another. In order for our school and community to stay strong and prosper, we must come together. As I mentioned in my previous letter, our parents. Our job as parents, teachers, staff, and school board members is to make sure our children have a good education and are safe. I do not consider myself affiliated with any political party, so maybe that makes it easier for me to set aside my political ideals. What do we, what do we not know about COVID? Short answer, a lot. We most likely will not know just how bad COVID is for years. We will not truly know how effective the vaccine is for years. We need as much data as possible to really understand what is happening, and that data is still coming in. Scientists are still in the midst of studying the effects, outcomes, et cetera, of this pandemic. So what do we know about COVID? We know COVID nineteen exists in the United States and around the world as well as areas. It is in my house. The kids are doing well, but my husband was hit pretty hard and is still recovering. We know there is a vaccine from the data, which proves to keep the most people out of the hospital, but does not guarantee you to be free of COVID. We know masks can help spread viruses, but best if we all participate in wearing them. We can protect one another. We know masks can help spread viruses. I didn't miss that. I know now that a gymnasium full of unmasked people during a pandemic can cause an outbreak. I know that the flu. Parentheses, during my lifetime, based on my observations and knowledge, close. Um, has not created this, this amount of sickness and absence from school. I believe that our whole community wants the best for our schools and our children, no matter what your political views are. With this being said, it is not our duty as parents, teachers, staff, and school board members to err on the side of caution. But that is it not our duty as parents, staff, and students, or members to err on the side of caution? Is it not best to say we did all we could rather than let's hope for the best? Let's come together for children in our community. Let's show them that we care and can work together for the greater good despite our differences. Thank you much, Stephanie Wagner.
So we're going to move on to district commissary report and donation. We have an action item there.
Um, we have a hundred and twenty five dollar donation from the village of Merton. Uh, to our uh intermediate school choir. The intermediate school choir did perform at their tree lighting. And I would just like to say thank you to help them throw a piece apart, so. Thank you very much to the village of Merton. Just looking for the motion to accept uh the donations as presented.
I'll make a motion to accept the donations as presented.
We have a motion as second discussion. On favor then say aye.
Aye.
Hold same side. Carrying, no personal action.
No personal action.
We're on to information. All of us taken care of, uh, the recognition ideas.
Yeah, so we would, uh, I get, have a follow-up meeting with Lindsay and as well as Andrew and, uh. Again, we will, uh, we will be bringing monthly recognition together and again, we'll still continue to gather and create opportunities for. For people to nominate, uh, some special people who have really assisted them. Uh, but also to hopefully acknowledge some people who, uh, throughout our organization do wonderful things that may not be, uh, thought of, so. Um, so our first, uh, recognition, I would really truly like to recognize the people that often go unrecognized. Um, these people are, when we start to think about all the thankful things we are and as our staff, as teachers, we begin to see thank yous. You know, whether they be gifts or special notes or anything else like that. Uh, our substitute teachers are, are here just as much as they are. And, uh, they truly need to be recognized and publicly thanked. In particularly, the, the work that they have done over the past year and a half. Their work has even exemplified that much more. In the past, we took it for granted, you know, we have a lot of people begging and trying to get into these positions as substitutes. We really have quite a few of them. But, uh, of recently, it's become more and more difficult and we have, we have individuals that we'd really like to say thank you to publicly. Um, because they're here, uh, on a moment's notice, imminent on a moment's notice. And we truly would not be in the situation we're here today, uh, or the past eighteen months without these individuals, so. Uh, publicly, I'd like to really thank you, uh, Xander Richmond, Tom Schoen, and Tracy Walther. Um, these three in particular, um, last year showed up to work every day. They were our building substitutes and, uh, they. Again, the most flexible people you can ever imagine and again, just so, so thank you, uh, thankful for, uh, the opportunity for them to continue to work for us. Again, even through this year. Uh, have been here every step of the moment. And have really said, Merton, just call when you need us. And, and again, have really done that too. But would also like to recognize that Beth Klingfield, uh, Rachel Hicks, and Mike Tiafro. Those individuals, uh, and in particular, Beth has helped us out a lot last year too as well. But Rachel and, and Mike have really turned through this year too as well, and particularly Rachel Hicks, would like to recognize her because she's fills in for an instructor. Quite often, and we've had to train her to work with some of her most needy children. And again, fulfills a need that is never seen and will not get a thank you from a parent. Uh, but they get a ton of thanks from not only our students, but our staff. And now this is, like, we hopefully recognize these individuals and say thank you to, to the individuals that help us make it go. When we don't see that happening every day. So Tracy, I know you're in attendance, so thank you very, very much. So if you are wondering, we are always looking for substitute teachers. Absolute promotion. We do have two individuals who I definitely are going to hopefully start working for us after, starting the new year for our family and parents, so. We're, we're open, so if you're interested, just let us know. Okay, we're on to committee reports. We have the student achievement committee just met. So, uh, big thank you to Maria again. Uh, the, the agendas and things like that were, were all posted again. We talked about, basically, got into some, some really details about what curriculum is and what curriculum isn't. Um, that was kind of our first part. The second part was, it's kind of an update to our school improvement, our dip plan. To, uh, what are we doing to, to Troy's point before, what are we doing to kind of make sure that we're meeting those specific achievement goals? And, uh, summarized by Jay and, and my backup. And, uh, finally, we, we finished up with, uh, kind of a little matrix and something to help us with, uh, teaching controversial topics as they come up. Or a, as an impromptu, whether it be for a current event. Or, or as we take a look at our curriculum, because as Maria stated, uh, we don't want to shy away from these things when it's age appropriate. And really be able to. So here's kind of a guideline matrix set forth to us to, uh, assist with that. Maria has been collaborating with a lot of curriculum directors in, uh, Southeast Wisconsin in our CSET. To help kind of formulate something like this too as well as we go through that as well. Um, that was recorded live and that will be on our website too as well through stream. If, uh, people want to take a look.
Appreciate the remedial training you've provided. With all seriousness, it is, uh, it's helpful. It really is, so.
You're gonna love my app, I'm gonna shoot next month.
I always, I always. Appreciate that.
It's true.
She didn't say that.
No, it was good. You were doing it as a new straight to the, oh, yeah.
It will help, because I will bring that.
It will help a lot.
Okay, we're on to new business. We've got the lease for the land on the corner of.
So the, yeah, the lease agreement was up with, uh, our, our current, uh, contract. And, uh, so April facilitated and reached out to as many local, uh, farmers who would like to have access to. Possibly lease that land for the growing season. Um, this year we did do something and, and again, working with Dean and seeing what's kind of out there is, is fertilizer costs get a little bit more expensive. We did extend instead of a typical two-year, which what we've been doing is extend it to three, uh, three-year lease. Over that too, so, um, we only had two bids that came in. Uh, we did have one bid that came in late. And, uh, so again, they missed the deadline, so, uh, so we only have two bids to review. And when we take a look at these reviews, uh, we do have, uh, the winner would be Harvest View Farms. Again, that would be at two hundred and sixty dollars per acre. Uh, April, what were we currently getting in our last lease?
Hundred eighty one.
Hundred eighty one, so, uh, it's about eighty dollars per acre. And, uh, again, that was our highest bid compared to Morris, um, when it came in a little lower at, uh, two sixty. So the administration is recommending the board approve a land lease with Harvest View Farms. For the twenty-two, twenty-three, and twenty-four growing seasons at two hundred and sixty per acre.
Make a motion to approve the land lease for Harvest Farms Inc. For the twenty, twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four growing seasons. At two hundred and sixty dollars per acre. Hold second.
Okay, we have a motion as second. I will excuse myself, accuse myself. I do do business. With Pete sometimes, so. So. With that in mind, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Hold same side. Motion's carried.
Okay, that will be noted as a three-o vote with Dr. T. S. King.
Okay. That's all the new business, future meetings and agenda items.
So we've got, uh, looking, looking forward, we've got January thirty first, uh, is in January, we have February. Uh, just as the board, we wanted to set a March meeting, uh, this is spring break kind of falls. And that'd be towards, towards the middle, middle-ish. What is the, the board's availability for the twenty eighth?
I can't do this. I'm welcome to.
Still can't.
I won't be able to make the twenty eighth.
Spring break is, uh.
Our boss tells me when, when it is.
Our twenty first is the Monday of spring break, so. Sometimes people come in a little later or it's, you know, busy break and unable to do what they need to do. So the fourteenth, does the fourteenth work for everybody? It should. Yeah, okay, we'll, we'll send it in March fourteenth.
Any agenda items?
Try and talk about making a plan for. Hope we respond to, I guess, more generally, help us in our schools. We want to revisit that and, uh. I guess it would probably be rehashing what Dr. Russ has brought forward previously. And I guess that was kind of, we can put it on the agenda, if, if no one is. Wanting to make a plan, uh, you don't need to bother having it on the, yeah. I mean, I think a couple of things. One, I, I don't have a problem relooking at it. Got. Uh, data that is coming out, so I'm not immune to the fact that there was a spike, I, uh, saw those numbers. Somebody said earlier whether, uh, you know, our attendance was impacted because of the holiday and folks just, uh. Taking abundance of caution or if truly, uh. Um, you know, there was concern there because the numbers were higher than kind of where we were operating for the first fourteen weeks. Uh, recognize that because, you know, clearly during the first fourteen weeks. Eighty to ninety percent of our families were sending our kids, their kids without masks. Um, it's an upside to the number. Uh, but, uh, clearly. Last week and a half, that's changed. Recognize that. Um, so I'm open to take a look at it. Uh.
Uh, we just technically, we're not getting discussed it here.
Right, I, I don't, I just say I'm open to it, but recognize that meeting's a month and one week away. Sure, so I just, I just point that out that. And I think there's work we can do. By looking at it, doing it. I know at the time I had a lot of questions and so I'd have to go back and review those questions that I've got. Formulated? Sure.
Yeah, I mean, I guess, uh, my goal might be to. Look at the plan, discuss it, and maybe even just say what are the things we like and don't like. And, you know, the plan is not, yes, a plan, no, a plan. It's what parts of the plan do we like, what do we want to change, you know? If we could have that discussion, I think that would go well.
My question is, last time, we've got administration bring it and then we got it. Is there any way that administration and board can come together or is it always public, like, when we first, like, is there a chance for us to talk and then?
It's, it's a open meeting item. It's not technically could be involved.
Right, but could we have an open meeting and make people line?
We can, we can call meeting. Yeah, we could call meeting. To deal with it, to. To.
And Lindsay, uh, maybe your que, I'm not sure if your question is, can we, can we just have a, some time to look at it and discuss it as a board? But that has to be done in open, but it can't be just a dialogue.
Right, people welcome to come, but maybe it might be more beneficial before we.
Like one of these working sessions we've done before, is that what you mean?
This would, uh, technically, it's what she's asking would be, you know, regular board setting. Where we would not be interacting with the other.
Correct.
Or in just work, work sessions, we typically use all of that. Interaction time with.
It can be posted at any, that's to go before, yeah.
I'm confused now. Um, I'm just saying, sometimes we come to our board meeting and then it's like we're voting yes or no. Is there a time that we can come together, talk about it, and then vote for it at it, at the meeting, so that maybe we're not so?
We can, we can set those parameters in place, say, okay. It's only for discussion at this meeting and. Set the parameter to go with that. We can set the parameters anyway.
Yeah, I just, I feel like the board meeting sometimes is a little.
Like a policy.
So would you?
You're welcome to come. I'm not saying anything behind you.
Would you like to do that ahead of the thirty first?
I guess that's a good word. Just, it was a such projection that we'd actually have more chance to work for administration instead of administration bringing something in that we say yes or no, like, that way we have more.
I guess that, I wonder if that might be, if it's. In terms of like, we're making a decision or we're not, even if it's a working session and you're talking to ideas and kind of saying yes or no to different ideas. Even though you're not saying yes or no to adopting the plan officially. I'm not sure how that works for all, like, developing the plan versus. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I'm just saying, last time, administration came up and they did this work and then it kept to us and then we just decided, right? So maybe if we had some input and had to work together more, that it would be.
Yeah, I under, I understand what you're saying. I wasn't certain, you know, if we're working together on a plan. Is that making a decision and, you know, I guess it's an open meeting anyway, so it doesn't matter, but if you're posting it as no decision is being made.
Right, just.
It's actually, it's just discussion, you can control if there's public participation, if there's public engagement. Or if it's just a dialogue with board, a combination of both, anything you. Or if it's just a dialogue with board, a combination of both, and a picky place.
So we're gonna, what would you like to do, would you like to, on the thirty first? Do that, or would we want to call a special meeting somewhere between now and thirty first?
We've worked to schedule a meeting before the thirty first to do that dialogue meeting. The lack of a formal phrase, uh, but we should obviously mention the case, it would be a part of that, so. We want to schedule that outside of right now.
I can, I can work, it seems like the rule of board wants to set that meeting. So I will work with the five of you and we'll set that, because Monday evenings seem to work best.
Right.
Uh, I think we can take a look at possibly the, uh, we'll be at the seventeenth through the twenty first, we've got, there's five Mondays in January, so we've got, that's nine. So uphold the word and, and then we will announce a date to everybody.
The other agenda items? And we're to a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn?
Second. Would you have a second, all in favor then say aye.
Aye aye.
Both same time, please, here.